Me of the panelists as well, I begin with the gentleman in the African wear. My bias is towards African wear this evening.
Thank you very much.
You mention your name and then you ask your question. And let's take one question, no long preamble, straight to the point.
My name is Emmanuel Nana Mahfou. My question is on the what honorable chairman said. He said over the past five years or so Ghana is seeing increase of only 4% in the port activities and about 300% in Togo's activities. My question is, what was Togo doing right that Ghana wasn't doing? That caused that increase?
Thank you very much. That's one question.
No, with the same question. With what Ghana has done now with the reduction, is that enough to par the increase with Togo as said? And the last one is to throw in like his excellency through in one. Are you considering allowing us to bring our right-hand cars to Ghana? So that maybe you charge us more insurance or something? And without having to change the steering wheel from one side to the other? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll take the young lady. I see a lady back there. Let's take the lady. No, madam, go. Yes, you in the black. Yes.
My name is Lisbeth Boachi. Now, honorable ministers. Now, when we attend meetings like this, we hear about the growth in the economy. Yet, the ordinary Ghanaian is always crying. And those of us who come home, the first thing that miss you is the extent of corruption in the civil service. And wore on to you if you have to get involved with land issue. It seems the local council and without excuse, some of the chiefs collaborate with the local council and frustrate all the efforts. And some people have no alternative but to pay before they get what they want. How is the government going to help to call the ordinary minister? God must be a Ghanaian. When are you going to benefit from the God-given endorsement?
Thank you very much. I'll take the gentleman in the hat. But before then, let me also invite onto the stage the deputy minister for justice and attorney general, honorable Gofred Dami. A question on corruption just came. And so more questions on corruption may come. Questions bordering on the law and so on may also come up. Honorable deputy minister, please take. And please, madam, if you help me with the gentleman in the hat. Well, it's actually the gentleman in the hat I meant. But after that, then it comes to you. Go on, go on.
Right. I'm going to say, my American, you're in the airport. Your friend, now the question, oh, Ghana, I would do airport. I would do airport. I would do, oh, but I would do. And you have to attend, and the second one, ambulance. I'm saying, because of ambulance.
Thank you, the gentleman.
Good evening, honorable ministers. My name is Samuel Osay and I live in Brixton. I've been in this country for 35 years and very soon I'm going to go back home. And what I was asking, the ports, is it G R A? You in the orange, yeah. If you say my goods are going to be tax-free, my fridge, my fridge, freezers, my TV, my everything is going to be free. My vehicle, you said is not going to be free. Is it not a personal effect? And two, the second question is, I went to Ghana purposely to vote for MPP last December. The reason why I went to vote was I wanted the MPP government to prosecute all the corrupt Mahama administration. But it looks as if, it looks as if this hasn't been on. Even though, even though Nana Addo has appointed a special prosecutor, we want to know what is happening. Otherwise, next 2020, I'm not coming to vote.
Thank you very much. We will take, we will take two more from here, get the responses, move here, and then we shall do this answer. The gentleman who is flagging the invitation card, please, madam, let's expedite it a little. And stop me one question so that as many people can get the opportunity.
Thank you. The name is Ranjiv Gunawatna, chairman of international consultants. My thoughts are on the economy predominantly. As you know, Nigeria, Ghana is a major producer of gold. And what we are doing is that we are trying to take mercury and cyanide out of the table of extracting gold. And at the present moment, I noticed that Ghana is a major producer. But it's not actually helping the people because at the end of the day, you need to have the technology and the know-how so that aggregators and artisanal miners especially do not encounter health problems and things of that nature. So the question that I posed to anyone who could answer that is that we would like to bring this technology and the know-how to Ghana. But we would like to collaborate so that we can create more value. Because the key thing is value in the economy. Rather than exporting raw gold out of Ghana, you should be actually building value in the economy so that people can benefit from the whole enterprise. So the idea is to see what.
Thank you very much. I see the question. Let's pass to the lady right in front of you, who still has her hands up. Yes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Benedicta Osay Abibio. I'm first generation British Ghanaian. I'd like to, speaking to it. I'd like to direct this question to your excellency. We have many Ghana because I thought this is all about the diaspora. Yeah, I haven't really heard anything being said about the Ghanaians here. So I would like to know what is being done, what is being put in place for especially the second, and we now have the third generation Ghanaians who do not feel included as a Ghanaian or even as a British. So what is being put in place to help these children, the youth, who are mainly falling on the wayside? Because I'm from South London and I have never, in all my years of being here, even had the people, anybody from the High Commission, deal with anybody from that side of London. It's always North London, East London. There are thousands of Ghanaians who live in South London and West London. And we would very much like to be included. And if you need any help in any way, I'll gladly volunteer to help you.
Thank you very much.
Because it's very necessary.
Thank you very much. The first six questions have gone. We'll do it this way. Let's start with the deputy attorney general, who will take the questions on corruption and prosecutions. And then we shall proceed. Honorable deputy minister, we promise to prosecute people. Why are we not prosecuting them? And when you get to the ports, there is always give me this, give me that. What are we doing to discourage such practices?
Thank you very much, bias. Your excellency, High Commissioner, Madecendom, Majority Leader, Mr. Chairman, and honorable, as well as qualified analysts. I think that the issue of corruption must be examined within the framework of the general promises made in the governance sector by the independent party. The MPP is manifesto, promise the delivery of an efficient public sector, boosting the quality of public sector delivery, minimizing opportunity for perpetration of wrongdoing against the state and also ensuring that wrongdoing is punished. Now, within the ambit of ensuring that public sector delivery is boosted, I'm very happy to indicate that very serious measures have been put in place all in view to protecting the national resources of the state. Earlier on, the majority leader, honorable Osay Chairman Saboche, alluded to the allocation of almost 61% of the nation's both sides resources to a company owned by the brother of the former president. And that company is Estin Kubik. And clearly, that is a situation that could not be counted as. And that to me is a clear indication of bad governors. You could not leave a situation where the nation's known both sides resources, over 60% of them are located to a company owned by the brother of the former president. Right after we assumed office, we detected such a situation, we promptly terminated the contract. And we terminated it not because it was given only on account of the resources having been allocated to a company owned by the president of the brother. By the brother of the president, I'm sorry. But clearly, even such a location was all in accordance with the mining and mineral assets of the country. There were serious violations of procedure when it comes with the grant of the mineral rights to that company. Now, it is very worth it to note that these same resources, if I had a tiny fraction of it, is what is now being leveraged for the construction of roads and road infrastructure in the country. And that is in the, I'm coming out, I will address that. I'm saying that it is all within, no, 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 I'm coming.
Hello, hello.
I will address.
Can we, can we do this properly, please?
I laid, I laid, I laid, no. No, I will specifically address, address the issue of prosecution.
Hello, sir. Hello, sir. Please, let's allow, let's allow our guests to answer the question to the best of their abilities, please. Please, let's, let's do this properly. Hello, sir. Honorable, honorable minister, may you continue, sir, please.
I am fully appreciative of the anxiety of the Ghanaian populace as well as Ghanaian's diaspora when it comes to prosecution of persons associated with the Mahama administration. But I'm saying that, but I'm saying that the issue of prosecution, definitely.
Hello, sir. Please, can we do this properly? You have your turn to speak. You have your turn to speak, sir.
So I lay the foundation all in view to show you that it's not just the prosecution of persons that you describe as operatives of former Mahama administration. That is important. But again, even, even with regards to that, prosecution has started. And I can allude to four cases of persons closely associated with the Mahama administration. The first is the Opuni trial. We all know Mr. Opuni was one person who was used by the Mahama administration to perpetrate wrongdoing. Now, there is a prosecution of the former Kukubos CEO, Mr. Opuni. It is ongoing and it involved various huge sums of money as losses to the state. I can also allude to the trial of the former board members of the NCA. And that is a case involving clear stealing of the sum of $4 billion. I can also allude to the prosecution of the former CEO of SLEET, which is a, it also involved the sum of over $60 million. I can also allude to the trial of the former CEO of Maslock. But I'm saying beyond that, they have various measures instituted. One major policy reform that President Ekuifaro's regime has instituted is the size of the special prosecutor. And that is because we recognize that prosecution of crime must not be political or must be perceived as political. Now, hitherto, there was clearly the vesting solely vesting of procedural authority in the attorney general. Now, President Ekuifaro recognized that in order to boost the prosecution of crime, especially crimes committed in the public sector and by persons who hide under the guise of political power to perpetuate corruption, can only be boosted when you set up a vehicle and that vehicle will be independent of the attorney general. So that, and that is a policy, is a major innovation, was clearly hitherto unknown in the history of the country. And that to me must be recommended. The special prosecutor's office has been set up. Indeed, a huge budget allocation of about 2 million Ghana dollars was made for him. In no time, I believe that you hear from the special prosecutor. Apart from that, the attorney general also still being prosecuted for procedural authority. It's also taking various measures. And indeed, I am happy to report to you that in the next two weeks, you will also hear of further prosecution of persons who were key in the Mahama administration. But again, you notice that all of these prosecutions that have started already, they are all matters that arose within the premises of statutory bodies. Now, I think that we must also appreciate that most of the time, the persons in frontline of the administration, ministers and whatever you, they use these statutory bodies as vehicles or conduits for the reputation of crime and illegality. That is why you find prosecution of board directors in SLEET, the CEO of Maslock, NCA and whatever you. So indeed, when these trials are going on, merely because it does not involve ministers, that's not mean that there has not been the prosecution of persons associated with the Mahama administration. After all, these are all persons who are acting as agents for key officers of the Mahama administration.
Thank you very much, honorable minister. The point has been made that the prosecutions are going on and more prosecutions will be made. Now, our brother from the G R A, why are we not bringing? And let's keep our answers straight up and then let's go out of there quickly. Why are we not bringing in the right-hand cars? And what is the definition again of personal effect? It's a fridge that I'm bringing. Is it a personal effect?
By law, a personal effect is anything, we are talking of household personal effects, things that have shown unappreciable use, that you are using them here. That is what we call household personal effects. Because you are moving residents, we expect you bring autos. But vehicle is not part of a household personal effect. Yes, it's by law, it's defined in the law. Let me go to the issue of what is Togo doing better than us? Because I didn't go through all the regimes, I didn't explain them for you to understand. We have the suspense regimes, meaning that duty is suspended. That is transit or transshipment, warehousing, temporary importation. For all these transactions in Togo, because it is not going to be consumed in Togo, you don't pay your duty in Togo. It is escorted by Togolese customs officers to the frontier. They would have completed their transition. And these goods find their way into the country. These were items that we benchmarked. We knew that most of people were smuggling them and that people were fraudulently preparing their invoices. And we didn't see them coming through the port again, but we find them in the market. There was a stakeholder conference. We sat down with these stakeholders and they agreed that the duty was too high. And if we could even halve it, there will be vigilantes for us. They would give us information, intelligence about those smuggling, those commodities into the country.
Can we bring in right-hand cars?
The law prohibits the importation of right-hand. But with the permission of the minister, it is allowed. People import right-hand drives, but the steer must be fitted at the left-hand drive. But it shouldn't be hanging. It shouldn't be hanging, it should be drivable.
Thank you very much. The law does not allow it. My understanding is that there may be some discretion that can be exercised. Let's go on to the High Commissioner, inclusion of Ghanaians in the UK, Ghanaians in the diaspora, their inclusion.
Thank you very much. We've been engaging second and third generation Ghanaians. Normally, we deal with identifiable groups. There's a group Bifrigana, for instance. We've engaged them on about three occasions. Just last week, I got a message that second-generation Ghanaian professionals are having a conference. We're engaging them. I'm very much interested, particularly in the second, third generation. You've mentioned the West and South. Of course, I mean, we are a mission. We just can't go into a community and attempt to engage persons we consider to be Ghanaians. We worked through Ghanaian organizations or institutions. But since you've offered your services, we'll get the consul of says to get in touch with you. I believe that with that human resource there, you have a very huge potential. I've met a lot of them. You meet them, your name sounds Ghanaian. You must be Ghanaian. I said, no, it's my parents who are Ghanaians. I'm British. And I tell them like, oh, you are lucky. You are both Ghanaian and British. He said, well, if you say so. I don't know. So it's important that we engage them. And I believe that when you have young people like this, you know, who have rough shoulders with the best and brightest, it's an asset to our country. But there's also the other part, those who think that they are more British than the whites. And they go wayward. And that's also a matter of concern for the mission. I mean, if you look at the victims of knife crimes, I mean, sometime last year, many of them were Ghanaian young people. And it's a worry to us. And we intend having an engagement with community leaders to see how we can in our own small way help. But please, for those of you who have children, the children are more valuable than the money. So just pay attention to the children and stop concentrating so much on the money. I mean, I had a parent calling virtually in tears. Can't I compel his 30-year-old to be taken to Ghana? I said, why? Says, oh, I mean, he's involved with some young people. He's afraid that by the time he's sixed or something, things will be getting out of hand. He thought as a High Commissioner, I could compel him, the young man, to be sent to Ghana. I can't do that.
Thank you very much, Echi. We will now go to the minister for information. Minister, you talk about the growth in the economy. Let's talk about the manifestations of the same, our attitudes, civil service people asking for bribes and so on at the ports of entry.
Bias, thank you very quickly. So for those who ask for bribes at the airport in particular, boss, your boys are here, will give us something. The Ghana airport company has taken some very quick action. Some persons who were found culpable have already been sanctioned. And now there's clarity that if anybody is doing that and you're able to make a clear report, that person will be sanctioned. It will not be tolerated there. Let me tie that quickly with the broader question of corruption in the civil service. So we've started a public sector reform program under the office of the senior minister, which seeks to, among other things, deal with that and improve efficiency in the public services. But a lot of the corruption in the public service is also because of the human interface in basic services. Here, there are many services that you get from the public service or government that you don't have to necessarily meet any human being. You go online, you fill it, you make your payment, it's delivered to you by post. That is where we are also trying to go with a lot of digitization of many of our services. So part of that challenge of dealing with corruption in the civil service and the public service is to automate or to digitize a lot of our services. Today, you can apply for your passport online, even though there's a human interface at the end for you to pick it up because the postal system is not being perfected. At least the application and the filling you can do online, can pay online. When it comes to registration of companies, et cetera, it can begin to do a lot of those automated processes. At the ports, for example, we've done a lot of paperless so that you don't have to interface with people. You can do, for example, the first eight stages online. As we automate and digitize a lot of those, we can reduce the human interface and the tendency for a bit of corruption there. Ambulances, under the $1 million equivalent per constituency or through IPEP, we are augmenting the Ghana ambulance service. We've already ordered 275 ambulances, one for every constituency that we are expecting to augment what we have under the Ghana ambulance service. The Ghana ambulance service that was created literally collapsed, but we've been able to put in that order and very shortly. I think before the end of the third quarter of the year, you would see us roll out about 275 ambulances out there to augment what is already available. And for the gentleman who says he has technology that can help us add value to mining, we would like to engage with you after the formal program and see how we can connect you with the lands ministry in Ghana. Thank you.
Thank you. I recognize the gentleman here. Let's again keep our questions short. Let's wait for our turn to express dissent.
Your Excellency, honorable ministers. Whenever one enters Ghana, there are two forms that have to be filled in. An immigration form and a customs form. When you're leaving the country as a Ghanaian citizen, you have to fill in a form as well. Traveling to Ghana three times in a month, I have filled in nine of those forms. As a British citizen, when you leave this country, you don't have to fill in any form. As a British citizen, when you enter this country, you don't fill a form. I think his excellency mentioned that we're now operating on the international level. Can steps be taken to relieve Ghanaians of the burden of having to fill in these unnecessary forms?
Thank you. I recognize the offer here.
My name is John Dansel. This question goes straight to the majority leader. As far as I know, Ghana has only one currency, unless you say me two. If it's one, why do we pay, why do you use dollar in Ghana? We rent some shops and we talk about the depreciation of the CD. Our currency, we don't, we have CD. Why should we spend? Landlords, they want dollars, hotels.
Yes, so for the question has been asked. I see the young lady.
Please, can you?
The question has been asked. The young lady back there, please, the young lady, please.
I want to understand what measures are being taken to promote local manufacturers. At the moment in Ghana, we're importing things like bamboo sticks, which we have, and things like chicken, which we have. What measures are being taken to promote local manufacturers?
We move to this side, the gentleman in the African wear. I'm promoting African wear.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. My name is Ibrahim Musa. My question is in relation to the national identification cars that have been issued at this point in time. I don't know when we, those of us living in the diaspora will have the opportunity to also register. I know Rupa is still in the pipeline. So very soon, we should be able to also vote from this country during national elections.
Thank you. And then we'll take the gentleman in the red, just in front of the last speaker.
Thank you very much. My name is Prince Asaitu. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Ghana High Commission. To be honest with you, recently, those who have been applying for passports, within two weeks, you should be able to have it. So we want to say a big thank you for the work that they are doing. Following from that, I would also like to know from the majority leader. We are so hoping that come 2020, Ghanaians in the diaspora will be able to vote. What assurance can you give to us on that? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take the gentleman in suit and tie, red tie.
Thank you very much. My name is Eric Ajaman. And my question goes to the majority leader and probably the deputy attorney general. In one of his usual speeches, the special prosecutor alluded to the fact that there has not been a legislation to give legal back into his office. And therefore, he has decided to rather liaise, and that is a word he used, liaise with other prosecutorial offices like the Yoko, the BNI, you know. And the reason why I'm alluding to that is that. And the reason why I'm alluding to that is that the reduction in the, by 30% in the import duties announced.
Hello, sir, the question is, please.
Yeah, the question is now coming. The announcement by the Vice President, which has been confirmed by the Customs, will it not be the case, just like what the special prosecutor was saying, that it may need a legislative instrument to back it up and probably documented as an Act of Parliament, so that a custom officer will not say it was just a mere words from the President?
Thank you. We will take the gentleman in clerical. Yes, go on, sir.
My name is Agriulgo Emmanuel. I'm glad hearing about the purchase of ambulances, but I know that ambulance themselves don't save lives. Nothing so far has been said about the training of paramedics, and what plans are we making to train paramedics who will actually save lives in the ambulance?
Thank you. I go to the, to the red, the lady with the kente around the neck, please.
Thank you. My name is Anama Brahinanka. All protocol observed. My concern is true to the general panel. My concern is of these very tragic road accidents in Ghana, and we are not sure, is it human error? Is it road, bad conditions of the roads, or vehicles that are not roadworthy? Or what is it and what is being done? If we cannot eliminate it completely, that's impossible, can we reduce it as much as humanly possible?
Thank you. Question has been asked, the gentleman behind, yes. After you, sir, then you have it.
Hello, my name is Imorana Tahiro. My question has to do with formation of business and business operation in Ghana. From the demonstration that the woman from, I think, customs, it actually shows a bit difference from what is actually happening in the UK. In Ghana, you would have to get certificates of incorporation, you come and apply for certificates of commencement of business, you have to make some, a whole lot of application. Unlike here in the UK, you can form a company within six hours, you get your certificate of incorporation, automatically you get your tax reference number, you don't have to go to HMRC and register. Can't we take steps to reduce some of the processes, so that people can set businesses so easily and then start operations?
Thank you. Let's take, let's take the gentleman in the back, the gentleman in the tie, the gentleman in the very, the very red, please, madam.
Thank you. I'm Afreder Jamankwa, known as Principal from Hot Digital Online, Hot FM here in the UK. And I'm asking this question based on, I mean, the callers and the people that we talk to them on radio, and it's about Rupa. I think the gentleman in red spoke about that, but just want to elaborate more on that. I know that there has been consultations in Ghana, and we understand and we heard that Mr., Dr. Bosmanasari, one of the Commissioners, said that even the people living here in the UK and elsewhere, I mean abroad, you need to have your right documentation before you can vote come 2020. Yeah, he said it, it's information, I know, we all know about that.
Can we go to the question, sir?
So my question is, depending on what he said, you know, Justice Yagua passed, I mean, this act in the court, High Court, Justice Yagua talked about that, and he said that people living abroad, he never certified that or specified that people having the right documentation in or wherever they are living outside Ghana. Now, my question now is, so if that is so, the law says, I know Majority Leader will talk to me about that.
I see the question.
So, but the question is?
Yes.
So if you don't have any right documentation, so I'm talking about what people are saying on radio.
That's right.
Does it mean that you will not have the right to vote come 2020?
Thank you very much. Question asked, the gentleman in the corner here, please. Madam, take the mic to the gentleman sitting, whose answer raised, sitting.
Hello, my name is Emmanuel Ashen, and my question is directed at the Deputy Attorney General. Now, if you are Ghanaian and you hold dual citizenship, you cannot hold certain positions in Ghana, so you cannot be High Court Judge and so on and so forth. But here in the UK, that is not the case. Now, there are so many Ghanaians around who can contribute to the nation building. So what steps are you taking so that if you were dual citizen, you hold dual citizenship, you can still hold some of these positions?
Thank you very much. Please, let's pass it to the gentleman in the white jacket. We'll take that last one for this round, and then we'll move back here. And let's keep the preamble short, so that we can take a lot of questions.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Okay, I take this opportunity to thank the High Commissioner.
Hello, sir, just ask the question, there are so many people.
Yes, that's the question I'm asking.
You are thanking?
No. For, the question goes to Mr. Asaychamun Saboosh, because he's the leader of the Parliamentary Affairs in Ghana. Yeah, the passport has been extended to ten good years as before, but the money involved is too much, and Oliver wants some more. So we ask him to send it to Parliament, so that they do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now come to the, to the days, we'll take the Majority Leader, please take your turn now, deal with the issue of Rupa. Are we voting in 2020? The national identification cards, are we able to register here in the UK? And yes, so you can deal with those two, Honorable Majority Leader. And if we can get a legislation to enforce the Vice President's comments at the town hall meeting, the reduction of the benchmark values, can it be done by administrative processes or do we need an enabling law?
Well, thank you very much. I think I will begin with that. The Vice President communicated what ought to have been communicated. The pronouncement really means that for those ones where taxes have simply been reduced, they could kick in almost instantly. But for those of them where you're going to now abolish or effect a tax regime, that one may have to come to Parliament. So it's a combination of the two. And my understanding of what he said was that government was going to bring the bill relating to a change in the tax regime to Parliament, and that it was going to have to be considered under a certificate of urgency. We want to look at the bulls and nuts, and whatever must be backed by legislation would be accorded prior of place. But for those of them where the taxes are being reviewed downwards, that may not require a parliamentary approval. But we'll look at the bulls and nuts to see what is required to be done.
Rupa?
The question is, if you don't have documentation, may you be accorded the right to vote? First of all, this really is a question to the National Commission and the pendant body. But just to say that the Constitution grants every Ghanaian of 18 years and above the right to be registered to vote. The Constitution does not up initially grant you the right to vote. It grants you the right to be registered to vote. And how do we ascertain that you are a Ghanaian? The law provides for such an identification to be made back home. Here, how do we identify Ghanaians? Now, think, you can only identify Ghanaians who have the appropriate documentation. Of course, working through various organizations, Ghanaians could also be identified, just like back home, maybe you require one or two persons to vouch for your Ghanaianness. So we could have a similar arrangement, but we must be very practical about this. Yesterday, I was, I was in Doha, Qatar, and a counselor there was telling me of experiences that he's going through. Many people come to extend the license of their passports. They come pretending to be Ghanaians, and related to one particular instance, where one person said that he hails from Accra. He asked, where exactly in Accra you come from? He said, I come from that part that is called Ushun. He said, no, there's no Ushun in Accra. He said, Usum, there's no Usum in Accra. But you speak any Ghanaian language? Oh, well, I am bringing my wife, and he never, he never came back. We need to be very practical about this. Let's not forget, now we are saying that we are going to afford every Ghanaian child free senior high school, and let's be careful about this. If we Ghanaians lead other non-Ghanaians to acquire Ghanaian passports, you overburden your own national treasury. That is, that is a giving. Unfortunately, you have Ghanaians leading other non-nationals to acquire passports, and we should be very careful about this.
National ID cards?
The national ID cards, I know the, the person in charge, Professor?
Ken Atifa?
Atifa is very busy working on how to grant as many Ghanaians as possible the ID cards. First of all, we must agree that if we had a full implementation of the ID card system, we would not require to spend so much in re-registering Ghanaians for elections. So we must pay particular attention to this effort. I'm aware, as the National Commission has indicated to us, that next year, they are going to register all Ghanaians anew, they are going to register all Ghanaians afresh. If we had such a system in place, certainly it will cut down costs hugely. So as a nation, we must take this exercise very.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister. Madam Giare, are there any lessons we can draw from the UK to fast-track business registration?
He talked about measures taken to promote local manufacturers. Realize that I mentioned something about young entrepreneurs. Government has isolated some manufacturing concerns that should be promoted in the economy, some of them being agro-processing, waste processing, energy production. And what happens is that when it happens, when you get approval to do that, you are below 35, you will not pay company income tax for five years, and after that, you will have a reduced rate. Now, when it comes to raw materials for manufacturing, importation, my colleague is here, realize that you have, you will not pay the VAT import upon importation. They'll wait for you to finish your production, and then when you sell, then you take out whatever taxes or whatever, and then you sell with the VAT. And then we also have capital allowance. So when you import machines to help you in the production of your goods, then you have a way of recouping the cost of the machinery that you use. The other thing I will look at is what we call the excise tax stamp. People tend to counterfeit a lot, and it harms our local industries, for instance, textiles. So these tax stamps are supposed to show that taxes have been paid on these products. Right now, it is limited to beers, wines, alcoholic beverages, but it's now moved to textile, so that any textile that you get, that does not have the tax stamp on it, then it means that it has been counterfeited and therefore seized. So these are some of the measures that are being, they're not only to promote, but also protect our local industries.
Thank you very much.
I think she talked about, somebody talked about register general.
Yes.
Yes, register, unfortunately, we do not, we do not register the company and give their certificates, so I cannot talk so much about register general. But I believe that we have a lot of people who have registered companies, but yet, when it comes to tracing them, you cannot find them because, probably they registered a company because they wanted a visa to go somewhere there. So that, in a way, I'm convinced that if you have the necessary documentation, it should help you to register your company as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Let's take the dual citizenship question. Honorable Minister, Deputy Minister, can we still be British citizens and be MPs?
Well, they state the law in Ghana now, you cannot. But I think that it's very important to place it in a proper context. The laws of every country in relation to citizenship are peculiar. United States of America, even a citizen of America might be born on the land of America before the person can be president. Now, the rationale for confirming certain benefits on persons who are wholly Ghanaian, and also confirm benefits on certain persons who are dual citizens, I'm sorry, as well as placing inhibitions in their way, is actually attributable to the fact that we want to create a society where the allegiance of certain key persons occupying certain key positions is assured. Indeed, in most countries, a judge of his real court clearly must be wholly a citizen of that country. I think we must distinguish the concept of dual citizenship from a situation where a person is of mixed heritage or mixed racial background, and that's different. So you can have a person, a mixed race person in a country, but of course, that person holding a citizenship of only one country. Now, the, if, well, I appreciate the fact that indeed, persons who are dual citizens desire to contribute to the developmental effort in a nation, and indeed ought to be encouraged. But of course, to do so requires constitutional reform, because such inhibitions are grounded in the Constitution. And I think that this is a national conversation that we must look at. We perhaps must explore the opportunity of, if possible, amend the Constitution to allow for persons of holding dual citizens to also aspire to certain key positions in the country. But for now, these are constitutional inhibitions, and I'm saying that it applies to most countries, every country. Persons who are solely citizens of that country enjoy certain rights and also are prohibited from doing certain things. Persons who are also dual citizens are also, are also, some inhibitions are placed on their way. And I just want to comment briefly also on the Rupa issue. I think that to add to what the Majority Leader stated, the right to vote, it must be noted, is not an inherent right. And when I say so, I mean that it is not a right that derives from a person's status as a human being. It's actually conferred by law. Indeed, further to what Majority Leader said, even the Constitution of Ghana states, a person of 18 years and of sound mind is entitled to register to vote, and registering to vote is also done in accordance with law. So even if you are 18 years and of sound mind, and you have not registered, and registered in a manner prescribed by law, you cannot even access the right to vote. And the law itself will place further inhibitions. So apart from the basic constitutional limitations. So apart from the basic constitutional limitations on how to vote or entitlement to vote, there could even be the requirement to vote in accordance with mandatory verification, whatever. These are all limitations that are conferred by law. So right to vote really, and of course, the electoral commission is the entity which ensures the exercise of the right to vote.
Thank you very much. I'll take the lady in the EFF hat.
Hello.
Welcome to that, sir.
Good evening. My name is, should I go ahead? My name is Wendy Adai. My question is about food security, actually. The gentleman isn't up there, but he mentioned seeds and agriculture. What I want to know is fertilizers and seeds, are these locally produced? Or are we, or is Ghana importing them? And who has control of that? And is there any move that will be made towards making it more local?
Thank you.
You're the partner, may I ask?
My enfra one, sir. Yes, I have a very, a very, Madame Farmer, the young lady with the left hand up. After that, the elderly man who wants to speak? Ah, sorry. Madame, please.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. So thank you, everyone, for coming. This is in relation to locally manufactured goods and also linked to importation as well. So directly talking about our Kantanka cars and other manufacturing items. What are we doing as a government or as a people to promote this manufacturing group that we, we have in Ghana? Also in making sure that his products are not in competition with imported products? So for example, any cars that are imported are not going to be in competition.
Thank you.
You didn't answer the question on ambulances.
We'll see, we'll be addressed, the gentleman right by your side.
May I be permitted to make a statement before I ask my question? I want to commend President Akufuado for following on the brilliant footsteps of President Mahama. I also want to commend him for taking a leaf out of the vision of Osajifo Dotakwame Nkruma by extending free education to all Ghanaians. The question that I want to ask relates to how we will deepen our democracy in Ghana. And it's directed at the Honorable Minister for Parliamentary Affairs. It would seem to me that we have a very strong executive and so it should be.
Hello, sir. I believe the question.
And we also have a very strong judiciary.
I believe the question has been asked, how do we deepen democracy? Thank you very much. I'll take the gentleman.
We also have a very strong judiciary. The question that I want to ask is, what are we doing to resource the parliament to such an extent that parliament will be able to hold its own? And what are we also doing to stop the speaker from trying to rewrite the history of Ghana in terms of pushing for different birthdays and actually contending that the founder of the country is Osajifo Dotakwame Nkruma?
Thank you. Let me take the gentleman who has, who has been up for some time before I take you. It's only fair, please, 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 sir. C I N, tax identification number. Maybe they may tell me on radio, so also we can make online register. They download two forms, so no, they feel they email a command, they power Ghana. Or they call office, they follow up. You catch them, say, and you have an in the hall. You find a character, they say, men, some family, they mail the command, they know how. They're the coin, they send them, they take home. If you saw them, maybe I'm present, they call, may they, and when you're, they're also, you know. Pacho, eh, Bakupet, my enfra, Obana, thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. My question is for Honorable Nana Alsay. My first question is regarding the Barakessa Road all the way to Abropo Junction. There is about one traffic light. Can the government do something about that? Because the people of Ghana, the everyday road user needs to be protected.
Thank you.
No, I'm so sorry. I've been waiting for a long time. The second question goes for diaspora. Goes for diaspora for under twenty-one, who have graduated, that want to go to Ghana.
Thank you very much, madam. Please, let's take your question, gentlemen.
How can we help without you inputting the national service on us with low remuneration? Can you please speak about that? Thank you.
It's one question each, please. There are too many people wanting to ask questions.
Direct, direct question to Kodo Opongkoma. Kodo, what is your understanding of peak oil? How has the effect of peak oil been factored into the government's agenda for industrialization?
Thank you. I'll take the gentleman in Fugu. Nice and simple, one question straightforward.
Thank you very much. My name is Tando, lecturer from Ghana and a PhD student here in the UK. I want to ask a question that relates specifically to corruption. I think we keep missing the point about corruption, maybe because we speak about it in general terms. So today, I want to ask about a specific question. So that when we talk about corruption, we don't talk about past governments. We also talk about current government or present government appointees. So that we don't see to cause a situation whereby there will be colonization and the whole environment will be polluted by rule that and that. So to Mr. Attorney General or Deputy Attorney General, you made mention about various corruption issues that are being prosecuted. We are aware that recently, Anas Armio, Anas came out with a documentary involving one gentleman here taking cash gifts when he was entrusted to work towards elimination of Galamsi. Now, I want you to tell me what specific measures have been done about that gentleman too, Mr. Bissiu? And he's here, sitting with us.
Yes, please.
Is he here with our tax money, which you as government delegation?
Thank you.
Or he came on his own?
Thank you.
And secondly.
This one question, sir. It's one question, sir.
To eliminate the culture of gift-taking among government appointees.
Thank you. I will go back to the lady in black at the very far end. Madame, please, the lady in, yes, you.
Good evening. My name is Araba Akwe and my question is in line to free education. I know that the UK's free education was implemented way back in eighteen seventy and it's gone through a lot of, I'd say.
Please, please, shall we keep some dekrom in the place?
It's gone through a lot of stages. My question is, it's a good move since eighteen seventy and almost every nation right now has adopted the concept. Thankfully, MPP has also adopted that concept and we're running with it. What can parliament do to make that a national policy rather than a party sort of political game? So that we don't have NDC constantly showing the shortfalls for free education. As we speak right now, UK still have their shortfalls.
Thank you. We will now take the responses to these queries and then we'll come back. But let me inform and announce that the government delegation that is here is made up of representatives from the Ministry of Information in collaboration with the High Commission and ministers of state and identified government agencies are invited to engage with the people of Ghana. It is our understanding that the gentleman, one of the questioners referred to, has been a longstanding member of this Ghanaian community here in the UK, has gone home and come back several times and is here today again as an independent Ghanaian to participate in the program. And he's not here on the panel, otherwise he would have been sitting here on the days. Let us deviate from the personalization and ask the German questions. Honorable Minister, Honorable Minister, Honorable Minister for Information, you will take a few first, then I come to the Deputy Minister for Justice.
Thank you. Let me quickly respond to some of the questions that have been raised. There was a question about, there was a question about paramedics. Okay, now you recall that I said two hundred and seventy-five ambulances have been ordered to augment the fleet and the operations of the Ghana Ambulance Service. The Ghana Ambulance Service trains paramedics and then puts them onto ambulances for them to function. So this two seventy-five that is coming in, one designated for each constituency will benefit from the same program where paramedics are trained and made available for that exercise. Road accidents, there used to be a time when a lot of our road accidents were caused by poor roads. These days, the statistics suggest that a lot of the accidents are happening on the very good roads. That because the roads have been improved, you have a lot of people who are just running riot on them. The Road Safety Commission, which has now been upgraded into an authority, is among other things, working to put speed limits, particularly on commercial vehicles, to ensure that that tendency is toned down. Also, they are doing a lot of work in terms of education of motorists to ensure that they are also better placed to handle their vehicles. They made a lot of budgetary requests from central government, a good chunk of which has already been made available to them. And I think we need to encourage them to succeed in their work. The dollar, yes, the Ghanaian currency is the CD and there are regulations for currency trade within our jurisdiction. But there are a number of things that also sometimes affect the exchange rate and easy access to currencies. One of them being what you see literally at the street corners, the Gaugau guys who are, you know, trading in currency, yes. And the quoting of a lot of services in currencies other than the Ghanaian CD. At the town hall meeting in Accra, this issue was raised and the senior minister and the economic management team have taken notice of it and are seeking to act on it in the shortest possible time. What we must bear in mind is that we also don't create a scenario where you have a bit of panic because you are clamping too quickly. But the EMT was made aware of this and they are moving to handle that as quickly as possible. There's a question about peak oil and whether or not we have factored it into our effort to industrialize. Did I get the correction? Okay, so my understanding of peak oil is that it will be relative to each oil field and the volumes of oil and commercial quantity that has been identified there. Kufu found oil, President Kufu found oil, it hits its peak production at some level in the Jubilee fields. But for us, peak or not peak, oil funds or proceeds from oil are backed by a particular piece of legislation. That guides how it is utilized. And if there's any suggestion that seeks to amend how we are using it today, we'd be happy to receive that and to work with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister. Just a few more additions for the road accident. Madame, you may be far away. Please be informed that this year, the Road Safety Commission asked for a certain amount of money, about six million Ghana cedis for education. Not one penny has been removed from it. All of it has been given to them. We have also, the president has committed an extra one billion to traffic lights and road markings. And he has made the commitment to provide the one billion in full. Again, Cabinet, like Minister has said, has given approval that the Road Safety Commission should be changed into an authority with the relevant laws to be able to deal with some of the indiscipline we find on our roads. And then the training for the paramedics, it went, has been going on for long. In fact, I just recall that they have reported that they have trained enough paramedics. They requested the last administration to give them ambulances. We imported into this country, truck, truck cars, and we parked them at the garages for the fittings to be done. What we have done now is to order for the brand new Benz, Benz ambulances and not the Kia trucks that mechanics in Accra would fit and work on. So that is the difference between the NPP and the NDC. I would allow the Honorable Deputy Minister for Justice to also take one or two responses and then we will continue. And then Madame, you will come in and then we will go.
Thank you very much. There's a question on the Anas issue as it relates to the investigations into the Galamsi matter. Yes, promptly, right after the publication was aired, I believe Mr. Charles Bissiu served aside, so he's no longer part of the operation of the Anti-Galamsi Task Force. Now, apart from that, he submitted himself to the Criminal Investigation Department. I believe that matter is being investigated by two independent institutions of state. It's being investigated by both the Office of Special Prosecutor. I'm not aware of the actions that have been taken by a special prosecutor, but Mr. Anas Armio Anas has indicated clearly that he has petitioned the office. And clearly, it's been the Office of Prosecutor sees of it. Apart from that, the Criminal Investigation Department of the Ghana Police Service has also, I'm aware, has invited Mr. Charles Bissiu. He submitted himself to investigations and I believe at the appropriate time in accordance with their mandated due actions and steps. So it is not the case that Mr. Charles Bissiu is being shared it. Neither is the case that he is part of the government delegation as was indicated earlier on. Now, there was also an allegation to the fact that, yes, there must be certain hard measures that will be taken by the government to fight corruption. And that is why earlier in my presentation, I was referring to certain measures that have been taken with a view to boosting public data service delivery and whatever. Now, I would also refer to the passage of the Freedom of Information Act. It is one bold step that has been taken by the government, the President and Akufuado's government. Indeed, many past governments have failed in their effort to ensure the passage of that act. And I believe that it is something that is worthy of commendation. It will boost transparency, it will enhance access to information. All those ones said in getting information from public service bodies or with a view to exposing corruption now will be enhanced in that effort. So the Freedom of Information Act has been passed and I think that is one step. Announcement of the E-Justice system. E-Justice also seeks to boost efficient justice delivery system and whatever. So these are some of the measures. I can also talk about effort that have been made to reform the asset declaration regime to ensure that the day Jira, when he receives record of assets of public offices, will be compelled to publish it for all of us to see.
Thank you very much. A lady from the GRA.
Yes, the first, somebody asks about promoting manufacturing. I believe I've answered that question already. Some task concessions that are made for local manufacturers. The second one is the Task Pay Identification Number, which is known as the TIN. What we should know is that it is possible to register for your TIN online. If you have a voters, I mean Ghanaian, Ghana, Ghanaian ID, voters ID. If you have a driver's license, Ghanaian for that matter, you can, and then the national certification card, you can register online. All you need to do is to go to our website, www.gra.gulf.gh and you will see it there and then you can register. I'm saying it for a fact because I have a nephew who is studying in India and he decided to give it a try with his voters ID. And within two days, he got the TIN. And then there is, I must admit, government, this TIN has been going on for about eight years that people did not take advantage of until government started tightening the screws. So for instance, all banks are to make sure that their clients have the TIN. If you don't have a TIN, you cannot register for your land. If you don't have a TIN, you cannot register your car. And that was where the panic started. And that was where people rushed into our offices. And of course, we operate with a system. When the system is overloaded, definitely it will hamper our work. But I must say that now there's a relaxation. Apart from the online, you can visit our office. The only thing is, I don't know where he told his daughter or he needs to go to which office.
Thank you. So we'll take.
So I think that with that, she should be able to get it. She should be able to get it.
Madame, we'll take the gentleman, the gentleman in glasses, in glasses. Okay, you two are in glasses, fine.
Good evening. My name is Kodo Frimpaalpe. I'm a small-scale businessman in the UK. I've been working, I've been doing business for about fifteen years now as a small-scale retailer of grocery foods specializing in products made in Africa. Recently, I started going into importation of our locally manufactured items. Ghana Fanta was one of my basic products. Last year, I encountered an issue where I brought in a 40-foot load of Ghana Fanta only to be told by the authorities here that it does not meet the U K standard and I have to return it back to Ghana. What I would like to know, talking about promoting our industry, what is the present government doing to make sure that our local products meet international standards so that businesses like me don't suffer consequences?
Thank you very much. We'll take the gentleman behind him.
Hello. My name is Semelokoko. I just want to ask a question to the Ghana Port Authority lady. My question is, when we import cars and they are in containers, they call them hangars. And they charge us a lot of money for those cars in containers. I want to know whether it's going to reduce the prices of those hangars charges whilst the governments have reduced the prior duties on cars. That's my question.
Thank you. We'll take the gentleman behind him. I mean, I hear you.
Yeah. My question is, I would like to appeal to the Honorable Ministers that I don't want surprise to be taken from them. If you go to our coastal areas, talking of this premix fuel. In fact, if you go to the grassroots of the fishermen and then the fisherman, the fishermengers, most of them are mad and knowing that they don't want even to listen, to hear what the government is doing. Simple because they don't get their premix. And then it comes in sometimes even four months, five months, sometimes even. Those that who have even registered, just a few people of them, a few fishermen who get their premix fuel. So please, don't rely on free education, but stick, go to that side to rectify it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come here and take the gentleman in the grey suit.
Well, good evening, distinguished panel. My name is Abeku Shams Abakan. And I'm known to ask very simple questions. So I'm going to ask one of my simple questions. I want to know from the panel what their understanding is of N H S. N H S. Is it National Health Service or National Helpless Service? I am saying this because we are in the diaspora and whenever a family member is ill and is rushed to the hospital and even in Ghana, you're guaranteed that your relative is going to die. So what I want to know is their understanding of N H S because National Health Service, we are patriotic about it.
We get that.
Our people are dying, but ministers and people with money, when they are sick, they fly and come to the diaspora for treatment.
Thank you very much. We take the gentleman in the cardigan.
Thank you.
It's on, please.
Thank you. My name is Noble Amwatun. My question is regarding land acquisition, land development and the corruption surrounding it. Almost everybody both in Ghana and over here had had an issue with being trying to buy land. The chiefs are in it, the lagers are in it, then the lands commissions are in it and a whole lot of people. But the importance of being able to buy land properly, I mean, for people of us who have been working in this country for years, buying land and developing properties, it is a very important area for national development. If somebody comes in for the purposes of residential building.
Hello, sir. We see your question.
So I want to know what we are doing to facilitate land acquisition and seeking.
Thank you very much. Very important question. Let's take the lady in the long sleeves here.
Hello. I'm Chompe Nefomi Mwamayo. I saw my friend have an episode with me, so I will mention Anas here now. I'm saying, oh, for example, I'm going to share a baby boy. I found a lot of children. I'm not in Ghana. I'm a citizen, so I'm not going to say it's electric power issue. I'm going to tell you. I'm going to say to myself, I'm going to find out. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you.
It does seem. Please.
Thank you. Please, I want to know the status of these three things based on which I voted for the government. I'm a man of, so I want to know the status of the national identification. I was not satisfied with the initial answer by the minister. We do not know how far, it started a couple of years ago. How far are we with the national identification even within Ghana? And then for us, the diaspora. And what is the state of one district, one factory? And then railways between Accra and Kumasi, the two biggest cities in the country. Movement between the two cities is very difficult. What is the status of that?
Thank you. We take the very last question from the gentleman here. Well, okay, we will take the last from you then.
I am Echo Henry Ajman Prempe. We have over 110 ministers. I will direct this question solely to the Minister of Information. What might have informed the President's decision on that?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Hello, sir. No, please, the gentleman here.
Thank you very much. My name is Bright. I went to Ghana last month for my dad's funeral. I was driving on the motorway, Accaratama Motorway in the evening and I couldn't see any street light working. And my view is Ghana, we have a lot of sunlight. We can make do of solar energy for our streetlights. I don't know why we are still depending on electrical kind of energy for our streetlights, that those guys go to cut the wires. And then when we fix it, the next month it's not working. Why can't the government make do of the solar energy we have in Ghana so that we can be assured that our streetlights on all the major roads, motorways are always up and running to avoid accidents? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All too soon, ladies and gentlemen, we will have to take the responses. Okay, let me give you the very last opportunity.
Thank you very much. Odupo, my question is, we have 110 ministers. Now, are they all effective? And when is one or two or three specifically from the Ministry of Road and Transport? Because there have been so many accidents on the Ghana road. When is the minister going to resign? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We will come up on the days now. Thank you very much. I will attempt to do it this way. Honorable Minister, again Deputy Minister for Justice and Attorney General, land acquisition, challenges of land acquisition, please address those. Address Ophusu Ampofu and the tape, the famous Ophusu Ampofu and the tape. And that's it. So you take those two.
Ghana is a country that has very elaborate laws on land acquisition. In fact, we have the Land Act, we have the State Lands Act, we have the Land Registration Law. I think that the main challenge that we have is a proper enforcement of the laws as well as our own inclination or disposition not to act in accordance with the law. Because indeed, the law is having prescribed certain areas, most of them being cities, Accra, Tema, Kumasi, as registration districts in accordance with the Land Registration Act. Now, even though it's a registration, the land is a registration district and therefore there are clear procedures for registration of land and what have you. We find various instances of multiple registrations. That clearly is not attributable to a lack of the law or absence of the law. It is just our own inclination not to act in accordance with the law and also a failure to enforce the law properly. So I think that, yes, in terms of law enforcement, we must do better. And I think that also as a people, we ourselves also have to check our own discipline and what have you. Regarding Ophusu Ampofu, I can say that indeed, the docket has been referred to Attorney General's office by the Criminal Investigation Department. The Attorney General is examining the docket in about, very soon, you'll hear from us on that one.
Thank you very much. We will take, Madam G P H A, are you able to address the question of standards, the Ghana Fanta situation? It may not fall directly, but of course, if there is a question you ask that we are unable to give the direct response to, please be informed that we have taken note and when we go back home, the relevant bodies and authorities will be alerted and they will take the necessary action. But Madam G P H A, you're closing your final comments and if you can tie in on the standards.
Yeah. I think that there was a direct question for us on the hanging of the vehicles and why they expensive. It's a special activity that requires more resources. Actually, it's not the importers' fault, but I think that the shippers have to be blamed for it. The one container, they can put four, five vehicles in it and then they have to hang some of them with chains and what have you. And we need specialized people. And then sometimes we need to support it with forklifts and other equipments to be able to deliver them from the container safely. Because if there is any damage, we have to pay for it. That is why that is a little bit higher than the handling of the other normal containers. That is the explanation for it. Now concerning the standards, I don't know whether you, Food and Drugs Authority, I don't know whether you got them involved and what permits you have to take from here before you do the importation because you were allowed to take it out of Ghana and the problem was here. So probably we may have to get into a bit of details and then we can advise appropriately. Thank you.
The gentleman who has about the Fanta, please. You may, you may see the trade officer here. Yes, Mr. Kofiado.
Please, if you may rise for us to see, this is the trade officer.
Yes. That is also one of the barriers to our goods entering the United Kingdom. I know that the Ghana Standards Authority, a couple of weeks ago, was here with a group who deal in electricals. And it's one area where we have asked the U K government to give us technical assistance so that we can overcome these barriers. But please, you see the trade officer. I mean, if you've heard of, there's this blue, there's this company, Blue Skies. I mean, about 80% of their produce is sold in the United Kingdom because they meet the standards. The Fanta, I don't know whether it's a regular Fanta or some other type of Fanta. But then it's important, it's important that you've asked this question. But anytime you have such a problem, please don't hesitate to see us at the High Commission. That is one of the reasons why we are there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Majority leader, would you want to take?
A couple of issues raised. First of all, relating to Araba Akwe's question. What is Parliament doing about, what is it, free senior high? And whether or not a succeeding administration may not change course. The free senior high is a constitutional imperative. The constitution provides for it. And so I'm not too sure that any regime can come and offset it. But the President has indicated that he is going to redefine basic education to include senior high. I spoke to it. That requires a redefinition. In fact, it requires a bill to achieve that. What is Parliament? What are we doing to resource Parliament? I agree that in relation to the other arms of government, judiciary and executive, Parliament is the weakest link. It is so because of our own history. But we need really to reposition Parliament. We have heard so much about combating corruption. The issue is if we had a stronger Parliament to exercise its oversight responsibilities. What we talk about as corruption, we'll be able to deal frontally with many of the issues. Our Parliament is not strong. But we're building the capacity of Members of Parliament, we are resourcing Parliament. We are indeed also restructuring Parliament. What issue that I want to relate to relates to the frequent peeling off of Members of Parliament. We must confront that issue. The N P P today, we are 169. Of the 169, 87 are first timers. How do you build Parliament that way? And two years into the administration, people are warming up to remove those of them who we are trying to capacitate. So you do all this to ourselves and we turn around to say that our Parliament is weak. Where does it happen? In the U K here. That at the end of every four years, entering Parliament becomes an all-commerce game and people move from wherever to enter Parliament. It doesn't, it doesn't help to develop Parliament. So I think that we are need together as a country. Maybe we need to be talking to the political parties to also introspect into how to maybe redefine their own constitution. Finally, I think there was one issue relating to land acquisition and land development. The Deputy Attorney General has spoken to it. Just to add that we have recently passed a new Lands Act. But I agree that we need to walk the path of the Land Administration Project, the Land Reform, the Land Reform Project, to develop a one-stop shop where land acquisition will be made much, much more easy and we'll be able then to close the chapter on land acquisition and procuring title deeds and so on in a matter of days. Once we're able to do that, we'll be able to combat the petty corruption in land acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. But Madam, if you do see the danger of some entity, some group coming to derail the gains made with free S H S and turning back the hands of time, I'll recommend that you keep the system that has brought the free S H S so that we can continue to enjoy it. If you do see that danger and some of us see that danger. Let me go to the Minister for Information. Please give us an update on the 1D, 1F, the railways, the National Health Insurance Scheme. Please give us updates on this and.
Again, again, very quickly, the National I D program has been rolled out. The piloting phase, I think, from the Addentan area has been very extensive. And they are now commencing the full national rollout. I have my National I D. I know several people, I think over 500,000 people or so who have currently been given their National I D cards and the process is moving on. We wish it was a bit faster than it is now. But within the resource constraints, this is what we're able to do. And as we improve on our resources as a country, we can do a bit more. 1D, 1F is one of the things that this administration believes we need to do to industrialize. There was a question about how we are helping, you know, Ghanaian products. Yes, there are a lot of incentives that are being offered. But the 1D, 1F program is also aimed at ensuring that within every district, the industrialization exercise commences. Currently, 79, 79 projects have been clearly identified under the 1D, 1F program. Some of them have been completed and have commenced work. Some are also yet to complete. But out of the about 260 districts, we have currently, as we speak to you, 79 clearly defined projects that are ongoing. There are people who say 79 over 260 is not good enough. That's a view, fair view. But compare that to the alternative that says that. But compare that to the alternative that says that we do not believe in a one district, one factory programme. That would be zero out of 260 at this point in time. So 79, and again, we expect to do a bit more as we move along. Railways, we, for example, succeeded in bringing the Accra-Tama railway line back on track. The Accra and Sawam line has also been reactivated. We have just proceeded to complete with work that will now help us to move from in Sawam to Koforidia. And works to get us from Accra towards Kumasi using the Sawam line are also set to be commenced pretty shortly. So the railway agenda is on. Tema-Mpaka-Dan construction is ongoing. It used to be Tema-Akosombo. We've done an extension to Tema-Mpaka-Dan and then through there, we'll do a connection to the northern part of the country. We've also been working to ring fence about a billion dollars just for the railway sector so that they can also do more than they are doing now. So in that area, that's the updated area. Solar lights for the motorway. Indeed, if you actually drive on the motorway now, you'll find that on the weighing bridge or the weighing center that has been constructed, they are using solar lights there. And when you get off the motorway, you'll find out that there's a new street lighting project from the motorway extension towards the Aflao Road. I think what remains to be done is the motorway itself. And as to whether they will use the solar or the standard technology, the experts can speak better to it than we can. The final question that I'll speak to is the size of government. You know, over 110 ministers and some say it is too large. The constitution that we run actually does not put a number to any precedent. It requires you to form a government of the size that you deem fit to deliver on your agenda. In the end, the people will judge you for it. The president has explained over and over again that looking at the challenges that we have and the size of his agenda, this is the size of government that he requires to deliver. We are two years into the administration. If you look at the numbers as have been put out, macro, we established flagship programmes being rolled up, Free SHS, all of these things that have been done. In some one and a half years, we'll have an opportunity to give a full account on one hand, that this is what we did with the number of ministers that we had. And you have an opportunity to, you know, help us make a decision as to whether or not we have delivered fairly enough with the resources that we had. Another quick point is that if you look at the number of ministers that we have, they are working. But majority of them, over 70 or so, are members of parliament. I'm a member of parliament and a minister of state. I don't get paid extra for it. I don't cost extra resources to the state, but I'm actually doing a double job. So again, if we factor that into the analysis, we realize that the output is what we all measure at the end of the day. I'm grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Madame from the GRA has indicated she wants to say a few things. So we'll pass her the mic. Plus, if you are also able to avoid the double salaries, you can also make some savings. And I can assure you that no minister here is taking double salaries.
There was something on NHIS. I must say that previously, we had VAT being 70.5% and that comprised VAT 12.5%. Hello, yes, so we had VAT being... Yes, 70.5% comprised VAT, GetFund 2.5%, NHIL, that is National Health Insurance Levy, 2.5% and then the VAT 12.5%. Last year, the government or through amendment of the law, decoupled it. So we have the National Health Insurance Levy and the GetFund being straight line taxes or levies. So that means that it is not part of the VAT in and out. As a result of that, we are getting, the government is getting more money in terms of levies in order to resource our health sector. So that is what I have to say.
Thank you very much, Madame. We also have some feedback. Some questions, like I said, are actually feedback that we are taking home. There were some comments on filling of forms, immigration forms and so on. We have taken notes and when we do get back to Accra, those questions will be answered. Sir, your question or recommendation that somebody should resign, I think that when we go, we will advise and take your recommendation. I'm not sure that even here in the UK, whenever there is one road accident, one transport minister will resign. I'm not sure. Again, on the question, on the question of the numbers, I know that you are here in the UK. When you decided to do Brexit, this is, and people think that Brexit is a small thing, there was a minister that was put in charge of Brexit because somebody, ministers, that were put in charge of Brexit because there is dedicated and committed action, focused action. So for instance, today, if they are talking to us about the railroad that is now being constructed, the rail, if you come and see what is happening, if a president wants to pay particular and focused attention on railways and he puts a minister in charge of that and he wants to create regimes and he puts a minister in charge of that, in my view, that is similar to putting ministers in charge of the focused agenda of Brexit. And so when we do the calculation, like minister said, you take majority from parliament and you also avoid double salaries. Then at the end of the day, the cost benefit analysis, then this current government is the winner. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I want to... We know we can go on forever, but others who have indicated to us, we will come back, National Health Insurance, we will come back, we will come back and do this. But let me also inform that when we took over, there was a debt of 1.2 billion hanging on the neck of the health insurance. What that meant was that the health insurance was dying and that's where we had that problem. What we have tried to do is to pay off that 1.2. And His Excellency, the president has reported that that 1.2 billion debt has been cleared. So that is why today, when you go to the hospital, you no longer see two queues, one for health insurance and one for people who are prepared to pay. Now you see just one queue. And we also have to comment that even in the past, some work was done to build some, one or two health infrastructure. Now that we have again revamped the health insurance scheme, we will apply ourselves and finish those projects that were started so that the health delivery in our system can only be the better. I want to at this juncture particularly show appreciation to the distinguished members that we have here on the panel. His Excellency, Ghana's High Commissioner, he's a very, very busy person for hosting us. He has been such a wonderful host. We particularly are indebted to the Majority Leader and Minister for Parliamentary Affairs. He's a very, very busy person. On Thursday, we were in Accra together. Thursday night, he flew to Qatar and he flew from Qatar for this programme. First thing tomorrow, he's flying back to Accra for a cabinet retreat. We are grateful that he took time to be here with us. We are grateful to the various agencies that are supporting and coming along with us to tell the success story, two years of good governance, changes happening. Those agencies that are here with us to tell the story, the Ghana Port and Harboz Authority and your representatives, the Ghana Revenue Authority and your representatives, this country is indebted to you. We are grateful. We are grateful to the Bafa Stock, the CEO is here. We are also exceptionally grateful to the Metro Mass Transit. I see the MD, Albert Eduwahim, please, are you here? I saw him here earlier on. He's been here to support us as well. We are grateful to him. The Deputy Minister for Justice and Attorney General is here. We are also very, very grateful. As for my boss and I, we believe that we are doing our job and the gratitude should come on the 7th of December 2021. You vote, show appreciation by voting for the MPP. That's all we want. That's all we want. So we thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, from the east of London, from the west of London, everywhere, the whole of the United Kingdom, you guys we know are very, very busy people. And we thought that there are two major issues why we want to do this. One, this is a government that is confident that we have a good story to tell and so we should tell our story. That is number one. Number two, this is a government that believes that wisdom is in the heads of Ghanaians all over the world and that we should put them together and tap from that wisdom. And so that is why we want to engage with you. We are not going to pretend that we know it all and we will take feedback like on the filling of the forms and so on and so forth. When we go home, rest assured that we will even improve on what we are doing already. Without a doubt, this is the best thing to happen to this country. This Nanaado-led administration is the best thing to happen to this country. But we will still improve on it and we thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much and we will call it a day. Let's have that beautiful Yenara Yasasini song again and let me invite my beautiful Linda to wind us down as she introduces the person who will do the honors of closing prayer.
Thank you very much, Honorable. So it's good to hear so many questions and feedback to our prestigious... I'll start with a prayer. We will end with one as well. So at this juncture, I'd like to call upon Fozon Shamsudin to give us a closing prayer, please.
Thanks so much, Linda. We thank God for our country. We pray for our country. We pray for our leaders. We pray for travelling messes for everybody back home. On this note, we say Alhamdulillah, Ya Robbal alamin. Arahmanu rohim, malihiya middein. Iya kana budu, iya kana stoim. Hiddanas siraat al mustaqim. Siraat al lazina ana amta alaihim. Garol maqdoobi alaihim wa la du'a alaiin. Amin.
Thank you so much for your time, everyone. I believe we can feel free to do some networking now. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.